Okay, 6 o'clock, so I will call the March 8, 2021, meeting of the Hingham School Committee to order. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You're hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be reported by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, so that I may inform all other participants of said recording. I know Harbor Media is recording tonight. If anyone else is planning to record this, could you please raise your hand and let me know? Okay, I don't see any. Our next item of business is to enter executive session. And so for anyone who's on this call, we will be going to executive session to discuss some strategies related to collective bargaining, but we will reconvene the open session at 7:00 PM, so feel free to come back and join us then. So with that being said, I'll take a motion to enter executive session.
I'll make a motion to enter executive session and to reconvene an open session for the purposes of approving minutes of the executive session held on February 22, 2021, and discussing strategy related to collective bargaining negotiations with HEA Units A and C and the Administrators Association, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
I'll second.
Thank you. We'll call vote. Michelle.
Aye.
Jen.
Aye.
Ness.
Aye.
Carles.
Aye.
Libby.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So as I said, we will be back in open session at 7:00 PM, and we hope to see you there. Okay, it's 7 o'clock. Welcome everyone to the March 8, 2021 School Committee meeting. We did open the meeting at 6 o'clock. Open meeting law requires us to to open the meeting before going to executive session, so that's what we did. And we're coming back now. I'm going to read the statement again, just because nobody was on the line before. "This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You're hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be reported by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so I may inform all other participants of said recording." I know Harbor Media is recording us tonight. If anyone else is planning to record this meeting, could you please raise your hands and let me know? Okay, not seeing anyone. We will move on to item four, which is to discuss memorandum of agreement with the Administrators Association for successor contract for 2020 to 2023 and act as appropriate. And I would like to note that we have Board of Selectmen Chair Mary Power here tonight. For anyone new to our meetings, because many of these contracts have a budgetary impact, both on the school department budget and thereby extension on the town budget, that a member of the Board of Selectmen signs off on all of these contracts as well. So welcome, Mary. Thanks for joining us tonight. Liza, would you like to give an overview?
Sure. So the first item on our agenda is for the Administrators Association, and that unit includes our department directors, assistant principals, and that counseling and athletic director. And we are very grateful for their contributions to the operations of our district. And we had a very productive and collaborative approach to this contract, and we appreciate them for that. So we came to mutual agreement on the new three-year contract for the 2020 to 2023 years, and with all terms retroactive to July 1, 2020. Just to give an overview of the agreement, the parental leave clauses were updated comparable to the changes that were made in the teachers' agreement this term. Their professional development stipend available for national conferences, which is one-time permitted during the three-year contract, was increased from $1,200 to $2,000, and that had not been increased for several contracts. There's updated language regarding reduction in force and concerning notice times and to reflect email notifications. Salaries were increased for a 2% cost of living raise. Longevity payments were also increased over the course of the agreement. Jury duty clause and leave benefit was added to the contract that is comparable to the teacher agreement as well. And we also recognized the extended work year that they put in last summer with additional work related to COVID and planning for schedules and curriculum adaptations and remote learning tools and other building operations with a one-time payment of $2,000 due to work done outside of their contracted time. So that is a summary of the agreement.
Thank you very much, Liza. At this point, I'll accept a motion.
Hey, I will make a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement with the Administrators Association for successor contract for the 2020 to 2023 school years.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, and we will do roll call vote. Michelle Air.
Aye.
Jen Benham.
Aye.
Ness Corente. Carles De Silva. Libby Luicki.
Aye.
Liza O'Reilly. And I'm an aye as well. Mary Power.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, item 4.2 is to discuss memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Education Association, HEA Unit C, which is the Custodians and Maintenance Workers Association, for successor contract for 2020 to 2023 and act as appropriate.
Carrie, before you go on, can I just say that we didn't mention that the administrators did ratify their contract before you did, which is standard practice, and that is true also with this contract. So, thank you. Just want to make sure we haven't mentioned that. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Yes, so for the custodians and maintenance workers, these people that keep our buildings running smoothly, and we greatly appreciate their dedication to our students, our teachers, and all of the buildings, keeping everyone safe and clean, especially this year. We have come to agreement with them for a three-year contract as well for the 2020 to 2023 years, with benefits retroactive to July 1 of 2020. There is updated language included on housekeeping items such as certain parental leave language, updated language regarding reduction in force, including email notifications, and timing regarding email notifications, and also clarifying seniority rights. There's language clarifying the reporting structure of lead custodians to the custodian and maintenance manager, as well as the principal. The contract provides a cellphone reimbursement payment for our maintenance workers, lead custodians, and anyone that would have an American Disabilities Act need. There is updated language regarding vacation day carryover to allow workers to use it through December 31 due to the valuable work that they do over the summer to prepare our buildings. And the unit also established a sick leave bank for the staff to apply their own days to support a colleague. And this is based on language that the teachers and the paraprofessionals have in their contracts. Contract covers a 2% cost of living increase, and also a movement of the maintenance workers up a step over the course of the contract for equity purposes and to reflect their current responsibilities, and also to create more of a career advancement opportunities for other workers. And in response to COVID work and our need for them to be there every day for us, we have doubled the monthly attendance bonus to add an additional opportunity for $50 per month, with some money for July through January guaranteed for those workers in response for their work that they completed. So that is that agreement.
Great, thank you. And Unit C has ratified this one as well?
Yes, they have.
Great. Okay, with that, I will take a motion.
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Education Association, Unit C, Custodians and Maintenance Workers Association for successor contract for 2020 to 2023.
Thank you. Okay, and we will do roll call vote for this one as well. Michelle Air.
Aye.
Jen Benham.
Aye.
Ness Corente.
Aye.
Carles De Silva.
Aye.
Libby Luicki.
Aye.
Liza O'Reilly.
Aye.
Mary Power.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you. The contract is approved. Next, we have to discuss a memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Education Association, HEA Unit A, regarding the reopening of schools in the 2020 to 2021 school year and act as appropriate. And I believe we have June Gustafson, who is the HEA president, on the line as well. So we'll have Liza take us through the contract, and then June, if you'd like to say something too, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna just do a very top-line overview. June will add, and then Paul will add later on in the meeting some more information about our return to school. This update of this reopening agreement. Once again, we had a very collaborative discussion regarding the working conditions for this next phase of in-person learning. And it includes language regarding for elementary and the middle school regarding mask breaks. Also, for the middle school, it confirms that starting on March 17, grades 6 through 8 teachers will be in-person on Wednesdays. And then for the elementary level, we'll enter Phase 3 for full in-person learning for grades 1 through 5. And it covers distancing that, you know, students, it's understood, would be from 3 to 6-foot distancing, but our teachers may maintain a 6-foot physical distance from the students, with the with the exception of certain special education staff and medical staff to ensure the health and safety of our students. Then, starting on March 15, grades 1 through 5 will move to Phase 3, and all days will be full school days, all five days. One of the topics that we had a lot of discussion about, but just because we're really invested in our students, was regarding the remote learners. And we will be hiring remote-only teachers that are familiar with our Hingham staff and our Hingham program to support our remote learners. But those remote teachers will work in collaboration with our classroom teachers, and the classroom teachers will maintain a relationship with their students by making available time for morning meeting and other whole-class and social opportunities daily for our remote students. And that the timing of that will be worked out with the remote-only teachers and the classroom teachers. And we've also agreed that if an entire elementary classroom is required to quarantine for COVID-related reasons, the classroom teacher, as long as they're able to work, shall continue to provide remote instruction for their students for at least five hours each day with a minimum of 3 and 1/2 hours of live and synchronous instruction each day. And then also, for any teacher, that will continue to work with the building administrator to identify any spacing issues or PPE issues, and those will all be resolved as soon as possible, and and we will continue to supply any PPE necessary for them to perform their responsibilities.
Great, thank you, Liza. June, would you want to say something?
Yes, the HEA met today to ratify the most recently negotiated amendments to the memorandum of agreement and voted in favor to do so. The association would like to thank Dr. Austin, members of the school committee, and the administrators who listened to our concerns as we moved into this next phase of reopening. We're very excited about it. And in closing, we look forward to continued conversation as we develop the next steps for the rest of the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the March 1 stated 2021 changes to the memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Education Association, Unit A, regarding the reopening of schools for the 2020 to 2021 school year.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. And we'll do roll call again. Michelle Air.
Aye.
Jen Benham.
Aye.
Ness Corente.
Aye.
Libby Luicki.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Carles De Silva.
Aye.
Liza O'Reilly.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So the agreement passes. I just want to thank our administrators and salary negotiation team for the incredible amount of work you put into all of these agreements, and to the negotiating team through the HEA and the Administrators Association. This hasn't been an easy year to work through a lot of these things, and we just really appreciate the collaborative nature of the of the whole process so far. So with that being said, we are on to five approval of minutes. So I will take a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on February 22, 2021, which is a regular school committee meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on February 22, 2021, for the realized school committee meeting.
Michelle Air.
Aye.
Jen Benham.
Aye.
Ness Corente.
Aye.
Carles De Silva.
Aye.
Libby Luicki.
Aye.
Liza O'Reilly.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Next is the minutes of the school committee meeting held on February 23, 2021, which is a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen.
I move that we approve the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen of the school committee meeting held on February 23, 2021.
Second.
Thank you, Ness. Any discussion? Okay, Michelle Air.
Aye.
Jen Benham.
Aye.
Ness Corente.
Aye.
Carles De Silva.
Aye.
Libby Luicki.
Aye.
Liza O'Reilly.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Next, we have the minutes of the school committee meeting held on February 23, 2021, which was a coffee with the superintendent at Linden Ponds.
I move that we approve the coffee with the superintendent at Linden Ponds on February 23, 2021.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Michelle Air.
Aye.
Jen Benham. Jen, you ready?
Aye.
Ness Corente.
Aye.
Carles De Silva.
Aye.
Libby Luicki.
Aye.
Liza O'Reilly.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. 5.4 is approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting held on February 25, 2021, which was the Hingham Unity Council meeting.
Still move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Carrie, I'd like to add I was not able to attend, but I did watch the video, and I'm fully up to speed on the issues addressed. And I encourage anyone in the community to take some time to watch the Unity Council recording. It's very powerful and very important as we move forward with our discussions on equity in our school system.
Great, thank you, Liza. So we will do roll call. Michelle Air.
Aye.
Jen Benham.
Aye.
Ness Corente.
Aye.
Carles De Silva.
Aye.
Libby Luicki.
Aye.
And Liza, are you abstaining?
No, I'm a aye.
All right, and I'm an aye as well. The minute's passed. Item 6, questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments and questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please use the raise hand function to raise your hand. When recognized, state your name and address and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee. As established by Mass General Laws, the responsibilities of the school committee are to: 1. Select and evaluate the superintendent; 2. Review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and 3. To establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So with that being said, I see a number of hands up. I recognize Leslie Whitman.
Hi. Thank you. Leslie Whitman, one rocky run. And I'm just curious, I don't know if you can share any information, Dr. Austin, about what you spoke about at Linden Ponds, if you were just updating them on the budget and how it was received, if you care to comment on that at all?
Do you want me to answer that, Carrie? I know they're supposed to go to you. Okay, yeah, it was really just a basic update, as you just said, whether it's the budget, just kind of happening to the district, et cetera.
Okay.
I always love my time at Linden Ponds.
All right, thank you, Leslie. Next, Heather Chisholm.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, Heather Chisholm, 8 Black Forest Lane. Thanks for doing this again. I just have a brief, brief comments. While I look forward to next week when my youngest child will return to school full-time, I continue to be concerned for our older students at the middle and high school. I appreciate the efforts of both advisory councils working towards concrete plans to increase in-person learning at both schools. The most recent adopted plan from DESI includes a phased-in approach for grades 6 through 12, with high school being last. Let's see the town that leads by example and return these students as soon as possible. Let's get a target date on the calendar now. A petition was circulated and presented with almost 600 signatures in support of a full-time return for our older students. Our fear is if we do not act now, we will be facing another phased-in approach come September. So often, we hear about our children's resilience. Our children have been resilient since last March. While we acknowledge our progress, it is time to acknowledge our failures as well. Our older children are becoming increasingly isolated. Research and statistics are clear in regards to the alarming rate in mental health issues, particularly among this age group. Common themes I hear being discussed by parents of middle school and high school students are: social isolation, lack of friends, depressed mood, lack of motivation, apathy, and no emotion tears. 38% of students at the high school are choosing to stay home. 6th and 9th graders have no connection to their new schools. 8th and 12th graders face no real closure as they prepare to graduate from these schools. I acknowledge the challenges, the challenging logistics at these grade levels, but alternate schedules should have been ready to go since day one. Also, in a recent Lancet study, the risk of infection was found to be similar at both 3 and 6 feet of spacing when proper mitigation strategies are in place. We have these mitigation strategies in place within our Hingham schools. If 3 feet still does not work, then I urge you to consider 5 partial days for the middle school and high school and plan accordingly for the fall. I will end by quoting recent testimony from a pediatric infectious disease doctor at the March 5 DESI meeting. "We can't claim ignorance anymore. The real-world experience has shown us the risk of in-person school is low. Our children, younger and older, are suffering terrible harm. We can keep our educators safe and also our children. It's time to do so." Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Next, we have Rebecca Nidisikko.
Hi, Rebecca Nidisikko, 5 Lily Pond Lane. Thanks for hosting this tonight. While we're in the webinar format, we're unable to see how many people are on the call tonight. Could you let us know that? And my actual question is about next year. I think we have to assume that some kind of distancing and mask wearing will be in place for a period of time, and it seems like planning for the fall coming up is at the bottom of the list, while we're planning for trying to get to spring. My question is, are we getting spaces that will allow our students to have a full schedule in the fall? Are we going to have enough teachers? What kind of planning is being done and by which committee? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. I can answer your first question. There are 149 people on the call, including the 50 panelists right now. As far as, so this isn't really a time, we can't go back and forth with questions because it's not on the agenda, though Dr. Austin will be giving us an update on the budget later, so we may be able to discuss it then. Next, Julie Donovan.
Thanks, Carrie. I assume that you took me up here, so I appreciate this. I'm just going to share a note. I know there's no Q and A back and forth that I share with this committee, but for the benefit of some of the other parents on this call. And I would like to say thank you for allowing me to speak on these public meetings. But I would like to take this opportunity to share important facts about grades 6 to 12, who are being left behind. A special call-out to the members of the school committee who did ask Dr. Austin to include 6 through 12 in the plan to bring students back to the classroom full-time. But I have a very clear ask. My ask is that we bring 6 to 12 back no later than April 26, 2021. That's the Monday after April break. My biggest concern about the older students is mental health. It will be one full year that our teenagers have been sitting in their bedrooms by themselves. This is a mental health crisis. And prolonging this is unconscionable, irresponsible, and far more dangerous than a negligible chance of catching or spreading COVID. Unless you have a middle or high school student, you cannot understand the negative impact on this lackluster, hybrid environment. I cannot wake up one more morning and look at my high schoolers sitting in their room all alone. The high school students have given up. They feel defeated. They're embarrassed to be in class with just a few other students. The teachers end up asking them to do a Zoom call. They might as well just stay at home. There is very little learning going on, and this cannot be categorized as in-person learning under the original intent. Hingham students are being disadvantaged for a fair education compared to their peers in other towns and private schools, and this will impact their college opportunities. Even if this is considered an exaggerated statement, this is how the students feel. So I say this statement very genuinely. I am praying for clarity and conviction to do the right thing for the health, socialization, and education of all our children. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Julie. And I just do want to note that Michelle Air and I are going to be meeting with high school students. That's been publicized through Principal Swanson and the Student Council tomorrow to get their input on it. We've heard a number of things from parents and from teachers, but we need to hear from the students too. Next is Kristen Pringle.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Kristen Pringle, 10 Amber Road. Thanks for giving me the opportunity. I have just a couple comments and then just kind of a general recommendation. I've heard some recent examples of inconsistent infection control practices and quote-unquote hygiene theater being used, and in some cases enforced in our schools and classrooms. hygiene theater being used and in some cases enforced in our schools and classroom settings. I feel our schools should have a consistent set of guidelines that are followed in order to prevent inequity in our classrooms, and I'm just going to give a couple of examples that I've heard. The first one is regarding paper use in classrooms. In some classes, teachers are not allowing papers to be used or turned in by students. I work in a hospital, a large hospital in Boston. We allow papers in hospitals. We allow paper mail to be delivered to us by the postal service. We no longer recommend wiping down grocery bags or grocery items like we did a year ago. Why are we not allowing students to use paper in school? And I'm going to delve a little deeper. In some cases, such as the high school where students are in class, not remote, students have to take a picture of their paper test with their phones and submit the photograph of their test electronically to the teacher. This poses a huge issue with equity in the classroom, as we shouldn't assume that every student owns an iPhone in our school system, and it also can be very humiliating at that age for a high school student who is unable to turn in their work this way if they don't have access to an iPhone. In another example, I've heard of a teacher who used a can of Lysol spray to spray down a paper submitted by her student, claiming that teachers are getting COVID this way from students. This is not accurate information, and furthermore, it's a completely inappropriate use of disinfectant. To my knowledge, paper has not been the culprit in spreading COVID-19 infections in schools. Another example I've heard is in an elementary class. If a student drops an item on the floor and one of their classmates kindly offers to help them by picking it up, it's not allowed. This is totally absurd to me. If that were my child, I would much rather them offer to help out their classmate when they are in need of help than face this theoretical and unfounded risk of getting COVID. Also, the use of school playgrounds. The town playgrounds are being opened. Other public playgrounds are generally open. Why are the school playgrounds not open for use? Furthermore, there's inconsistency on kids that can go to recess. Some classes can go, some can't. So my, my big ask, it's a huge inequity issue among the students. I would recommend that we have a clear, consistent set of infection control guidelines in our classrooms based on evidence. They should be universal across the classrooms of our elementary schools, middle school, and high school. They should not be based on hygiene theater by individual teachers or taking actions that make us feel better mentally and don't actually help with infection prevention and provide us with a false sense of security. I'd encourage the school administration to use the manpower and resources available to them within the newly formed advisory group that includes some healthcare providers to come up with a district-wide policy and use what we know is effective in preventing COVID-19 transmission. The bigger issue is the equity issue. We can't have papers being turned in in some classes, not in others. What people, what kids can touch, I think it should be a district-wide policy that should be worked on by this newly formed working group. Thank you.
All right, good question. Matt, if you can unmute yourself.
Am I good, Carrie?
Yep.
Thanks. Hi, thank you for taking my comments. So I have two comments, but before I make those, I wanted to call out.
Sorry, could you just say your name and address?
Oh, sorry, Matt Cosman, 12 Summit Drive. I just wanted to call out a couple of quotes from the DESI meeting that was held on March 5th. Dr. Medina, who's the Director of Pediatrics and Experts, said, quote, "The data on teen suicide and self-harm emergency department visits for mental health is very clear. The pandemic has made an existing mental health crisis far worse than we could have ever imagined. From 2019 to 2020, the proportion of mental health ER visits has increased 24% for children five to 11 and 31% for children 12 to 17." He closed with, "There is an urgency to act now. We can't wait." From Dr. Marotra, who's an infectious disease physician from Beth Israel, she said, quote, "I've come to understand even more deeply the importance of humility, the necessity of dialogue, and the willingness to learn from what both the data and the human experience show. What the data reveals is that in-person learning is safe and achievable." She closed by saying, "What the experience, what the human experience shows is that for our kids to thrive and for our educators to thrive, we should return to in-person schooling with the urgency that our kids and families deserve." Finally, Dr. Duran, a Tufts infectious disease physician, said, "My entire career and every day of my life is dedicated to protecting people from infection. Over the past year, I've come to really understand fear, and I felt it as a healthcare provider, and I've tackled it with education and more importantly, with acknowledgement, validation, and compassion. Ultimately and slowly, we have gained increased comfort by doing it again and again and coming out unscathed, and we have realized that mitigation measures work and we have control over our own safety, even though we spend our days with sick and contagious patients. Our teachers in Hingham have been doing the same by coming into schools since September, and the data shows that we must and can move quickly to expand in-person learning for the older grades. In that DESI meeting, there was a vote to bring back elementary by April 5th, and our school board and superintendent, NHGA, have already set in motion being ahead of the curve, of the curve of the state, as we should be. With the continued lack of in-person transmission in school of COVID, I implore all of you to please put dates out to return from middle school and high school, ideally by the beginning of April. My other comment has to do with planning for the fall and ensuring we can have full day K through 12, five days a week. I would like to see more specificity beyond highlighting that we plan to leverage COVID relief funds and hope that distancing rules will be relaxed. In particular, I think we need to have secured space to ensure that both foster and the high school can operate in the fall, even if we will not have foster north next year, and we've heard about the challenges at the high school with three-foot spacing. Thank you."
Okay, thank you, Matt. And I see Leslie Whitman, I don't, you already spoke, I don't know if your hand is up. Okay. All right, I think she put her hand down. So next is item seven, which is the superintendent's report. 7.1 is a COVID-19 update. Dr. Austin?
Thank you to the chair and thank you to the committee and to all the questions. They're wonderful questions and very heartfelt. So this evening, as always, I'll, I'll share a brief COVID update, but also going to talk a little bit about testing tonight and talk obviously about the return to school, which we're obvious, very, very excited about. So the first thing you see is we always see the town of COVID, Town of Hingham COVID-19 Public Health Report. Town has stayed yellow this week, a slight uptick in the number of cases over the week. That seems to be playing as well this week as well, so we seem to have leveled off. We need to continue working hard to get us down to green, just as a community, keep us all safe. The good news is the test positive rate is still below two and a half percent, although we did have a, a slight increase from 2.18% to 2.46% in the positive test rate over the past week. So for as far as the, whoops, as far as the school goes, we had in the district between teachers and staff, we had seven positive cases last week. Of those cases, there were two staff and five students, and those are reflected on the bottom scale as well. And so once again, we are continuing our decline of numbers of stu, of numbers of total since the January peak, and I thank everyone for their hard work and towards making that better every day. And the quarantine report, unfortunately, we've seen an increase in quarantine overall as we continue to open up and people are exposed to more things. We are increasing the number of people in quarantine, so it's something we have to be vigilant with and continue to be aware of in our schools. But over the last three weeks, we've actually seen increases in quarantine after several weeks from the middle of, middle to late January until the middle of February. So we've seen increases particularly after the February break. So hopefully we'll see those start to decline as well as cases decline. And testing continues to be very positive for us in a, we've tested over 1,267 individual tests. Of that, the negative tests have been 99.92%. We still have only had one positive case, and that was back in January. For our overall positive test rate is 0.08%. Again, we average just about a little under 200 individual staff every, every week. So I'll talk a little bit about student testing, which has been mentioned a lot lately and certainly by DESI, et cetera. So to do the personnel demands, personnel demands of pool testing, we have contracted an approved third-party vendor to implement our pool testing across the district. So beginning tomorrow, March 9th, we will begin pool testing at Hingham High School. So that'll be in cohort A tomorrow on the 9th. On Thursday, March 11th, we'll actually begin pool testing at Hingham Middle School, which will be the cohort B. And then beginning the week of March 15th, we'll begin pool testing in grades three to five. At this time, at K-2, they need more assistance in direct club, et cetera. So our start date is to be determined. We're not, we're focused more on older students right now before we turn to the youngest of our students, but so that date will be to be determined a little bit later. I'll give you the update on the next regular school committee meeting on that. So educator and staff support testing and vaccines. So the district is continuing our PCR testing for staff every Thursday. We average about 200 staff per week, as I already said. We anticipate that educators are vaccinated. The demand for testing will actually reduce. We will eventually eliminate the individual PCR testing and transition to pool testing for both our students and staff. Staff will be included in student pools, so there won't be any staff-only pools. They'll be included, so a pool of 10 would see roughly nine students and one staff member or something in that range, and that would be, that's the way it's recommended to be done. So that's the way we would do it when they eventually moved to that. All Hingham Public School staff are eligible for COVID vaccinations beginning on March 11th for the governor. However, CBS RSC's opened the eligibility for staff last week, and many have either received their vaccine or they are scheduled to receive it soon. I would also mention here that the, I met today with our PTO presidents across the district, and they're very interested in helping our educators, and so we're working on a plan to, to assist educators while out working on a day and giving their appointments, and I very much appreciate the efforts of the PTO in supporting our educators and getting that done. We all know that it's vigilance that gets us these appointments, and so having people at home who are willing to help us with that is greatly appreciated. So I want to update everyone on the increase of in-person learning. So as we've already heard today, that the, with the ratification of the, the agreement to the MOA or the amendment, that the, the district is ready to implement the increase to in-person learning that was ratified by both the HGA and the school committee earlier. On March 15th, grades one through five will attend school full days, five days per week. Parents and guardians do have the choice for your child to attend either in-person or remotely. There will not be a lot of switching back and forth, so we need the numbers on each side so we can adequately program. We have approximately, at this time, 50 children who will remain in remote learning across grades one through five. Really, that, that number is actually three, four, I guess, together. So we have 44 students who are remaining in remote at this time, and the district has already hired and they started this week, remote teachers who are onboarding this week. We have three of them at the elementary levels, so we have adequate coverage for those 44 students who will provide core instructions to the students and continue access, who continue to access their education remotely. I think one of the things, and certainly with the commentary tonight, that people are very anxious about the high school and middle school levels. So as previously noted, both Hingham High School and Hingham Middle School advisory committees have been meeting, and I've asked for proposals to increase in-person learning for secondary students this week. So I expect those to, to occur this week and come very quickly. We have been, they've been working very hard. I know they're working through some issues that they continue to work through, and I expect to have a full proposal this week. So anticipating, so in anticipation of those proposals, I would like to request that the school committee consider scheduling an additional meeting for Monday, March 15th. So that's next Monday to allow me to review the proposals with the school committee for your consideration to increase in-person learning for the secondary students. I expect this to be in a matter of weeks, not in months, but along the lines of what people have been asking for, if not even sooner, and certainly ahead of the curve of what we anticipate DESI will roll out for the secondary level. And so I appreciate all the work on that. I ask that people give us this one level to, to the meeting on Monday, specific dates of what we anticipate to start and what that program will look like on Monday, the 15th, if you'd allow that meeting to occur. That's it.
Great, thank you very much. I just want to reiterate, thank you, thank you to the PTOs for helping with the teacher vaccinations. That's, should be a huge help, and to the advisory committees at the middle school and high school and the medical professionals who have served on those committees. Their logistics work through, they've been doing some great work, and we are looking forward to hearing your proposals on the 15th. I pulled the committee and we're all available, so we'll schedule 7:00 PM on the 15th, and I'm sure a lot of people will want to join that call too.
Perfect, thank you.
Does anyone on the committee have any questions about the COVID update and next steps? Okay, seeing that, I see Val Robin has her hands up. No, I think you have to unmute yourself.
That is correct. Can you get that better? I'm having a great conversation with myself, or maybe not so great. I think Dr. Austin addressed some of my questions. However, since you've already indicated that you're going to be returning next week, the 15th, to discuss some of those proposals, I had a couple of questions related to the webinar format. You know, one of the problems is we can't see, it's great to have the transcripts, but we can't see who, who's attending, who this is important to, and who this matters to. So if we're going to continue with the webinar format, I can get a minimum, then we need to get a listing of everybody who logged on, however their IDs came in. I mean, before we could see pictures, we could see, you know, and whether people were talking. So that's one issue, and then part of the proposal, what I was going to ask before you went into it, and maybe you want to hold off, but I'll, I'll throw out the question, is if we get to a situation where you can't institute the return for the high school or maybe even for the middle school, but can there be such a way as there, there's an option that's more viable than what exists now, that people can attend at least four out of the five days? I mean, these classes are empty anyway. I mean, I can go through, you know, anecdotally, but I'm not going to, and make it that it's not based on, you know, and, and let the, let the kids and worry about scheduling and whatnot. That's just to throw out, I mean, obviously the preference is that you guys come up with a proposal that offers more than we have now. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Val. Dr. Austin, do you want to address any of that, or, I mean, I know we will next week.
No, I, I think, you know, that'll be really next week. I think, you know, to, to be very clear, my intent is to bring back students five days a week. That's what we want to have occur, and how that occurs and how many hours per day is still up in the decision-making, and so I don't want to, I don't want to go too far into those weeds and promise something that I can't deliver upon. And so I think that I'll, I'll leave the rest of that until next Friday, so let the advisory committees do the work that they've been really working hard with, and I'll have a proposal ready for you on, on Monday.
Great, thank you. And thank you for your thoughts on the Zoom webinar format as well. As I noted last time, this is something we're trying out after watching other school committees and talking to other committees about best practices. So, so they're secondhand, trying it, and we will make a decision probably at some point in future as to whether we're going to continue. 7.2 is on the Student Led Action Civics Project, and we have Andy Hoy on the panel to give us an update on that.
Thank you. I'll, I'll introduce him, my esteemed Director of Social Studies, who does a phenomenal job for the district and particularly engaging our students. And so this is a fairly new project with the state and in collaboration with the districts, and I will turn that over to Andy Hoy with an update on civic engagement for our, our young middle school, our, our middle school, high school students, I believe. So, Mr. Hoy.
Sure, thank you. Yes, so this is a new project called the Student Led Action Civics Project, and as Dr. Austin mentioned, it really comes from two initiatives at the state level, both of which were related to enhancing civics education. The first was the updated curriculum framework for history and social science that the Department had put out a couple of years ago, and the second was a 2018 piece of legislation passed by the Massachusetts State Legislature called an Act to Promote and Enhance Civic Engagement. So according to that legislation, this is the first year that we are implementing this project at grade eight, and despite the pandemic, there was no change on that timeline, so obviously the logistics to pull. So obviously, the logistics to pull this off will be more challenging, but we're very excited about what promises to be a very engaging experience for our students. So the goal of the project is for students to actively explore civic issues in a hands-on way and to develop their own civic skills. And the way they do this is they'll work together to select an issue that's important to them at the local or state level. They'll research that issue, they'll learn about sort of the root causes of that issue, and then they are to develop and implement an action plan to try to address that issue. It's important to note that the topics for these projects are meant to be student-initiated, they're student-run, and the teacher really serves as kind of the guide on the side, mentor and facilitator. So it truly is a student-driven project, and we think it's going to be very exciting and very motivating for them, you know, this spring after a very challenging year. Couple of things to note to assist us with this. Eighth graders and their social studies teachers are going to be working with a program called Generation Citizen, and that is an action-based civic education organization. It provides teacher professional development, teaching resources, provides coaching to students as they work on their projects. And I want to extend our gratitude to the Hangham Education Foundation for supporting that partnership through a very generous grant. I'd also like to extend my appreciation to the eighth grade social studies teachers for taking on this large endeavor on top of, you know, how hard they're working already during this challenging school year. So the letter that I sent to you all at the school committee, Dr. Austin, was to give you a heads up that this is coming, because a big part of this process is that students are going to be reaching out to decision-makers who impact their communities, and that includes all of you on the committee and you school administrators, others in town with what we might call high civic capital. I sent a similar letter to Mary Power and Tom Mayo, and they alerted the Hangham, you know, town departments, our local state representatives. So students might be reaching out to you in order to learn more about a certain topic or to ask for your support on an issue or an action. So we've certainly always had students, you know, K through 12 engaged with the community, but this is really the first large-scale project like this, and it's going to be happening this year for eighth graders all across the state. So public officials, I think, might be very busy in hearing from all of these students. So we're looking forward to it, and thank you for your interest and for your support.
This sounds terrific, and I can't wait to see what they come up with. Does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments regarding this? Carlos?
Director Hoy, thank you so much for the presentation. Either you or Dr. Austin, are we receiving any additional funds to enhance and promote civic education? I remember that I did touch, you know, based on that a couple of years ago, when the governor proposed this, that he needed to put money, not just come up with initiatives. Do you, are you aware whether we are getting any additional money besides the Hangham Education Foundation providing us with a grant?
Carlos, I can try to answer at least my part of it. My understanding is there's not any direct funding to the school districts themselves. I believe part of the legislation created some funding for sort of a statewide civics fair, which will eventually be part of this project. It's not happening this year. So I believe, if I'm remembering the legislation correctly, that it was more at a state level as opposed to targeted towards individual districts.
Thank you, and we are grateful to have half as a community partner to make this possible.
Yeah. Andy, thanks for the presentation. Can you just tell us, how big are the groups of kids working on this? Is it, are they doing it individually? Do they have a choice? Is it ten kids?
Um, I mean, a teacher's classroom, you know, 20, 25 students will work together, and that's really part of the, there's different approaches you can take, but that's part of the Generation Citizen model, because it really gets students to talk with each other and reach consensus, and there's kind of a teacher-led facilitated way that they go about doing that. And a big part of this is we want to teach them those civic dispositions that allow you to be a good citizen. So that involves listening, learning about all sides of an issue, learning how to disagree respectfully. That's kind of the initial part of the process, where we really work, look to create that classroom environment and set those ground rules, create a class constitution about how we interact with each other and how we kind of build consensus toward an issue that everybody can kind of work on, and they are permitted to sort of propose amendments to the issue. I like this issue, but I could get behind it a little bit more if we sort of target our focus over here. And there's a process that they'll go through to reach that consensus and decide how they can approach an issue that they all feel good about working on together. And then from there, they kind of split off and decide, you know, this small group might take this aspect, another small group might take another aspect, but they're all working together, that 20 to 25 students in each class. So all together, we'll have 15 of these projects. Each of our three eighth grade teachers has five sections of students that they'll be working with.
Great, thanks. Yeah, consensus is the challenge of democracy. That's a great lesson, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and yeah, just keep us in the loop. I hope students will be reaching out.
Sure, they will.
Okay, next is 7.3, which is the Social Educational Collaborative Budget. Dr. Austin?
Thank you. Yeah, in your packets tonight, you have the budget projection sheets from the Social Educational Collaborative, and the program enrollment for the board director's meeting that we just had on March 5, 2021 is also attached. The enrollment projections and budget for the fiscal year in line with the projected budget, which is good news. The final, the financial projection for FY21 indicates there will be a positive financial balance at the close of the school year. The FY22 budget was discussed at our recent board meeting. The board reviewed the information and will be prepared to vote on budget at this meeting in April. The rental space at Randolph High School will be renovated for the return of the Social Educational Collaborative Program for September of 2021, which is very good news. And the board approved the sale of two 12-passenger vans to the Randolph School, Public Schools, for $500 each. These were surplus items that we have on the list. But what I would suggest to you, the entire proposed budget is in your packet. Please review those and let me know if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this? Lisa?
Oh, I noted that the tuition recommendation increase for in-district students was 4%. Have we included that in our budget, the 4% increase?
I don't have that number for you right now, and I don't think John Ferris is online with us. He says to attend another meeting at the same time. So I will let you know as soon as possible whether or not that increases it, because this just came out, so it probably is not yet, and maybe a slight adjustment.
I mean, we're probably at three, so, you know, but it is one more, you know, 5%, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we are on to item eight, which is communications. 8.1 is student communications, and Carly Kennedy is on the line.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. So first, today, March, the exact midpoint of term three. As for recent high school activities, last week on March 3rd, we celebrated Spread the Word Inclusion Day, a day designed to globally promote positivity and inclusivity. The Student Council collaborated with our Best Buddies Program to raise awareness about being inclusive to everyone and what that entails in our school building. So posters and signs were made and put around the school, as well as videos were posted to both Twitter and YouTube. On Saturday, March 6th, the Drama Club performs a virtual performance of the Danish soap via Zoom for their annual festival, and they performed against three other schools. Our We the Youth Club has begun Mask and Hand Santiser Drive, where they are accepting donations that we provide to homeless people in the Boston community. Our math team just recently placed first for the division, so they'll be advancing into the playoffs very shortly. As Dr. Austin previously stated, pool testing will begin tomorrow for the high school. And then the school has also recently announced that final exams will not be held this year due to time in person that may have been lost. And then lastly, tomorrow at 3:00, a virtual conference will be held with the students at HHS and members of the school committee. This meeting is designed for members of the committee to listen to input from students regarding going back to school full-time and how these adjustments can be made, and we're hoping for a good number of students to show up for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carly. We're looking forward to the meeting tomorrow. It's great to get more students, but does anyone have any questions for Carly? Okay, seeing none. Communications received by the superintendent.
Just quickly, and somebody mentioned on the callers that mentioned earlier that we did receive a petition with approximately 600 signatures requesting for a full return to in-person learning at the secondary level. And so we thank all those people who signed that and gave that petition to us, and thank you for your time on that.
Thank you. 8.3 is other communications. Does anyone else have? Okay, not seeing any. Nine is unfinished business, we don't have any today. Ten is new business. 10.1 is to hear a recommendation regarding a Big Yellow bus lease from fiscal year 22 and act as appropriate. Is John able to?
I don't know if John's back on yet. It doesn't look like he is, but I've got the proposal in front of me, so if you don't mind, I might be a little scripted on this, just making sure I cover everything. So as previously discussed in budget sessions, the Hangham Public Schools leased the 22 school buses will come to term at the end of fiscal year, this year. This lease was a five-year lease and a new warrant, and has been submitted for this year's town meeting for majority vote approval to allow the school system to enter into another five-year lease for regular school transportation buses. There is a lead time for procure buses. The FY22 budget has been prepared based on a quote from Datto, which is D-A-T-T-C-O, that would be purchased through the Sourcewell Consortium. Hangham is a member of Sourcewell and used this consortium for the last lease. At that time, it was named the NJPA, which is the National Joint Powers Alliance. Sourcewell is a national cooperative purchasing group that performs government procurements using methods similar to NGL, Chapter 30B. Back in January of 2013, and repeated in September 2013, the Massachusetts Inspector General's Office issued Procurement Bulletin Volume 19, Issue 3, which essentially stated that using government cooperative bidding agencies for procurement was acceptable so long as the procurement process was open and fair and followed procedures similar to 30B. Sourcewell's contract award is with Navistar, which makes this general contract available to all its agents. Datto is a large agent of Navistar and can sell through the Sourcewell contract. Hangham Public Schools has experience with Datto over the last five years. Datto is headquartered in Bristol, Connecticut. We have found their service to be excellent. In addition to having service facilities in Northern Mass, which is very convenient, the vendor has enabled the lease us equipment on short notice and always been fairly responsive. When Hangham Public Schools operates 25 buses right now, wow, we do, I'm sorry, operate 25 buses right now, the request is to lease 21 new buses for five years. One bus has two remaining years on the lease. Also, Hangham Public Schools has placed the purchase of three of our existing fleet at a cost of approximately $107,400 on the FY22 capital schedule. As a result, HPS only requires 21 new buses. Anyone will get to choose which buses to buy. Patrick Cunningham, our transition supervisor, has tracked the maintenance mileage of the buses, and we will pick the best buses to retain. The cost of the new lease increased to $12,780 per bus per year from the $10,773 that it is now. The annual cost is projected at $268,380 for the new contract. On a bus basis, this is approximately an 18.6% increase from five years ago. The contract includes a five-year extended warranty, which essentially takes care of all the major maintenance. HPS maintenance would primarily consist of brakes, tires, oil changes, and minor repairs. This arrangement with our local mechanic and Datto has worked very effectively for HPS. The new buses include air-operated and heated driver seats and overhead compartments for the drivers. The options provide more comfort for drivers and a paracal storage area that is easily accessible. The option cost is negligible.
Paul, I have just.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry about that, folks. I had another.
That's right. Do you want me to finish this, John, or do you want to?
You go ahead, Paul. Yeah, I'll listen if the command is closed, I'm here.
All right, thank you. Due to the lead time for getting new buses, HPS needs to commit to Datto so the buses can be ordered, delivered, and delivered before school commences next September. The existing lease is good until the end of July, and we will coordinate this contract to coincide with that date to ensure that we have enough time to register the buses, get them inspected, and prepare for September while avoiding any overlap. Perhaps Datto will drop a bus off and pick one up at the same time. I recommend the following motion. It is to authorize the Director of Business and Support Services to issue a purchase order to lease for five years, 21 Big Yellow regular school buses to Datto in an amount not to exceed $275,000 annually, subject to a majority vote approval by town meeting, which authorizes schools to enter into a five-year lease and appropriation by town meeting, which provides funding for the lease.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the committee have any questions about the buses? Okay, I just have two. One is, do these buses have seatbelts?
The buses do not have seatbelts. As in, as a rule, the only buses we have seatbelts on, carry is the metro buses.
Okay.
Because they're really on the highway, so.
Okay. Great, and then the other question was just on the timing of this. So you, the buses that we have currently would not lease last till the end of July, and then we need to switch them over. And I was just wondering, I know the extended school year goes through August 6th this year, will we have enough buses to transport these children?
Yeah, we should, we would have the buses. I mean, we'll still have, you know, the lease fleet that we have right now, we will have, you know, they'll be in place until August, and then we will get these new buses, and they'll probably, I mean, they're not all going to show up on a day, they're going to be delivered throughout, you know, probably the month of July. The big key of why we're, you know, anxious to get this going now is because of the lead time, because they have to come and pick up 20 more buses. So if they don't pick the buses up, they're still there for our, you know, availability. So I'm not, you know, anticipating any loss of service or any, you know, difficulties, you know, finding transportation for whatever we may need during the summer, which is typically limited in account.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions, so I'll take a motion.
I'll be glad to make other motions. I move that we authorize the Director of Business and Support Service to issue a purchase order to lease for five years, 21 Big Yellow regular buses to Datto, D-A-T-T-C-O, in an amount not to exceed $275,000 annually, subject to a majority vote approved by a town meeting, which will authorize the schools to enter into a five-year lease and appropriation by town meeting, which will provide funding for the lease.
Thank you, Carlos. Do we have a second? Thank goodness. I have a little alphabetically, Michelle here. Hi. And then hi. Yes, hi, Andy. Carlos De Silva.
Hi.
Libby Lukey. Hi. Liza O'Reilly. Hi. And I'm in, I as well. All right, thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
And next is to discuss school department budget communication. I think Dr. Austin has a quick update, and then I just had something I wanted to discuss with the committee.
Sure, thank you. I wanted to give you an update because there has been some changes to the budget, nothing as far as reduction of the things that we put in the budget, but rather the, Julie, can you make that go away? There you go, thank you very much. So as we always start with just the guiding principles and that we did agree that we would do this in our budget, that's provide for the expanded tier system support, to fund the process development of a five-year Hangham Public School strategic plan, provide staff and support for special education that ensures the district is able to appropriately and adequately trust the students, students, staff, and community, to fund the resources required for year one of the district's equity inclusion plan, and provide for needed personnel support for central office administration, which includes and provide for needed personnel support for central office administration, which includes the addition of a payroll clerk, administrative assistant, informed data analytics, and provide school committee social media and communication support. So when you look in the box here on the left, what you'll find is a, from the very beginning, when we started this process, which is on the right, you see the FY preliminary budget was originally $62,478.22, which represented a 10.13% increase. Today, that amount is actually reduced by $1,116,201. And overall, the new preliminary budget after the changes is now $61,362,019, which is an increase of 8.16%. You can see that's different. We were at nine point, I believe it was 9.67, the last time we talked about that on the last meeting. And it's now down to 8.16%. And I explained that in another page as to how we got to that number. So again, the approved budget for FY 21 was $56,739.85. The proposed FY 22 increase is now $4,631,034, which brings the budget of $61,362,019, which was an increase of 8.16%. And sorry, the prior base budget was 9.79%, not 9.67, which was $62,282,816. So roughly $900,000 dollars reduced since the last time we spoke. So there are some things that change the drive to that. One is that the use of the known S R 2 funding for student opportunity act plans and the HTSS. So that was in the, in essence, about $430,000. And we had the federal monies that we applied to the HTSS plan that we have. So that reduced the budget. We had a change in our full-day K assumptions. We originally in the budget had planned for 225 students, and so we increased our enrollment to 275, which is what we are closer to anticipating. And we can adjust that up or down as we need to in the future weeks. But adjusting that to 275 students adds about $175,000 to the revenue side. We have some now no leaves of absence that were extended. We had planned on nine people returning and yet only three have. So six have extended their lease for another year. So that changes the budget. We had a change in the student tuition who no longer are with us, a student that will not be with us for next year. We did have a vocational tech increase for one student, so that adjusted up. And then we had some assumed use of federal monies for our state drones for July this coming year. So with all of those, that came up with the same as what we had in the budget. This is just overall, when you, when you see the sheet, this is for your review later, about where the changes are and how they're reflected overall. And again, these are all the monetary issues. The pluses are actually the things that have been removed from the budget or covered in the budgets. And then the minuses, such as the new VOTech acceptance is $24,000 cost to us. Overall, we've had a decrease from the very original budget of the 10.13% of $1,116,201. And finally, this is the new sheet as of now. These are all the adjustments. So you see on the right, the right column is all the adjustments from January 7th to now that bring us to 8.16%. Again, for your reading leisure. And that's it. Just questions and comments. Yeah, we have the budget.
Thank you.
We all know every year, I mean, budgets, budgets move up and down a little bit every year. They all seem to decrease over time as we have new monies, et cetera. And so we anticipate that, you know, that trend will continue for a little while longer, but that's what we have up now. Do you want anything to that, John, before?
Um, no, I just wanted the, I'm not sure if you mentioned, Paul, just the caution of like, you know, we're using ESSA funds in there, so those could be one-time monies. Right? So, you know, that Core 32 is a big piece of that million, you know, point one. So, you know, that would be like one-time money. So we'd hit a structural gap for that next year, but I just wanted to make sure people are aware of that. But other than that, I thought, this is just, here's where we go. There's still, you know, perhaps more changes. We're still looking to try and hone this better. And, you know, that's where we're at right now.
Yeah, thank you for your work. And that's, that structural gap was my concern about it too, because many of the positions we're adding will need for at least another several years. So I think that is something to be aware of as we go forward. Does anyone else on the committee have any questions or comments about this? Okay, not seeing any. And then, so then the other thing I wanted to just bring to the committee. I've been thinking about our proposed fiscal year 22 budget and talking to a lot of people in the community. And it's clear that a lot of people don't understand the budget and the budget process because they're not in the weeds the way we are. People have been asking why our ask is bigger than normal this year, why we haven't funded certain positions, why isn't it bigger? How have past budgets impacted the in-person learning this year? Because they certainly have. And what the plan is for moving forward. So among other things, to explain some of the issues. I'm thinking it would be something along the lines of the Inside Town Finance series that the Select Board is doing. And I already submitted one to the anchor in the Journal, which was basically our statement that we agreed on before the Board of Selectment meeting. And so the reason I wanted to bring it to all of you is, I know I'm the school committee spokesperson, but because I will be speaking for the seven of you, or the seven of us, I wanted to make sure that everyone was on board with this idea. So does anyone have any objections to doing that? I don't think we need to vote on it or anything, but, okay. All right, great. I think this will be helpful for people. Next is 10.3. To receive notification of the appointments of Sherry Robertson, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, and Caitlin Bolgioni, as Executive Assistant to the Assistant Superintendent, effective February 16th, 2021. Welcome to you both. And 10.4 is to receive notification of the resignation of Gabby Parker, Executive Assistant to the Assistant Superintendent, effective February 19th, 2021. And we wish her luck on her future endeavors. 11 is subcommittee and project reports, and we'll just go, I think, alphabetically with this. Michelle, do you have anything?
Uh, just a couple of quick things. Um, I need to skip.
Sorry, Michelle. I'm sorry. I see one hand up.
Oops.
Josh Charos, do you have a question about the appointments and resignations?
Hi, Joshua Ross, 125 Wombe Court. I had a question about the budget. Are you taking questions on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not. I forgot about that. Yeah, we can, we can do that.
So it's great that, I don't want to say you found a million dollars, but the fact that there seems to be fluidity and some money moving around, I'm just curious as to why, if some things are going in and coming out. I know we keep repeating this, but there are two pretty important positions that you know everyone keeps talking about. Is there a reason why if there is a huge reduction like there was this week, that we wouldn't add in maybe the Fine Arts Director or Special Education Director?
Okay, thanks, Josh. I will, I would note that we were asked to come up with a recovery budget from COVID-19. And those, those positions aren't, don't qualify for that, but it's really important for the committee going forward. And we see that probably as part of the strategic plan going forward to look at, take a look at those positions. I don't know if anyone else has anything to add.
Well, Carrie, the special ed people are in this budget for this year. But also, we're trying to make up the deficit right now that shows on the town forecast before we start adding to it. So I guess that's sort of the task at hand at the moment is to just even getting the initial ask. And then I agree with you, we look at the strategic plan on, such as the Fine Arts Director and some other things. So yes, we want it all. We just have to unfortunately make up the deficit right now.
That's great. Okay, Rebecca Silva?
Hi, Rebecca Silva, Three Stone Gate Link. I just, to piggyback what Josh was asking about, it goes back to the budget meetings that we've been in conversations that we, the community, have been having over the last month or two months, which is many of us were saying one or two months ago is ask for it more at the beginning so that we don't have to give it all away. And I understand that we are in a recovery and that we are trying to come back from the pandemic. But these things were needed pre-pandemic. So for me to hear that we can't add them in now, even though we found this money, we can't add them in now. A lot of people, including a lot of us in this, on this committee and on this call and in this community, were asking for them beforehand. So it just goes to, to me, it just speaks to, if they had been added in at the beginning, like many of us advocated for, then they wouldn't be seen as an add-in now that some money has been recovered. And I just, I don't think you can go back and change it now, and I'm not expecting that to happen. But it's something that's been niggling at me for the last month or two, and now to hear we can't, because we found some more money, we can't add in more because we're trying to pare it down, just, it just makes me wish I had spoken up that much sooner about it. And the second thing about the budget, and this has also been bothering me, is when it was first started to be proposed and talked about, it was talked about the gold standard. But it was also then, at the same time, talked about as a recovery budget. And they're not the same thing, because if it was the gold standard, if it was, we're coming with what we really need as a town, what our schools really need and what our students really need, those things would have been included from the beginning instead of a pared-down budget that then was kind of proposed as the town asked us what we needed to fully recover from this. And that's not really what we asked for as a town. What we really asked for, in my opinion, as a mother of four children at every, every level, IEP 504, regular ed, Plymouth River, middle school, high school. We didn't ask for everything we needed for our kids. We asked for the minimum to recover. And it's, it's time for the town to put the schools above the minimum requirement to get by. I just, thank you for your time. I don't expect anything to change because of my comments, but I feel like they need to be said.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. And I think you'll find that you're preaching to the choir here, because many of us have been on this committee and have been asking for a lot of these things for a number of years. I just want to clarify, when we say the town asked us to do a recovery budget, we're referring to is the Board of Selectment and the Advisory Committee in the meetings with them. That is what they requested. That's what they're doing on the town side as well. It's not, just not to general citizens. I don't know if anyone else has anything to add to that. Michelle?
Thanks, Carrie, and thank you, Rebecca, and Josh as well. Well, I mean, I, as Carrie said, you're preaching to the choir. I hear you, particularly as the mom of two students who are furthering their studies in college on your Fine Arts degrees. How much we do need these positions that are deemed extras, but really probably aren't extras, given that many districts in our benchmarks also already have these positions, Fine Arts Directors, Director of Equity and Inclusion. I do think that one thing that we all recognize, though, is that that strategic plan that we keep talking about is really going to be instrumental in letting us know exactly, that we know we need those positions, but I think we do need to have that strategic plan before we can figure out exactly how to fill them, who the personnel could be. We have internal people that could take those positions over. So I think that is part of the issue as well, that we really need that strategic plan. And had we been able to do that this school year, then we could have been putting these things into the proposed budget for next year. But very difficult, I think, to have done that, the strategic plan this year. And I do really think we need that to move ahead with those, some of those positions.
Great. Thank you. Laura Ashetella?
Carrie, can you hear me now? Laura, Laura Ashetella, Fort Boulder Glen Road. My question is along similar lines, but I was hoping you could speak particularly to the $645,000 in, looks like the teaching line. You know, if you found that money, we know class sizes are really big. Why can't that money be used for other teachers? I'm just a little confused. So if I could just better understand that line item in the budget and why it's not being utilized, if it's money that's been freed up.
Dr. Oster, John, do you want to take that? You're muted.
Okay, I think John's okay with the budget book, and I knew you'd get mine as well, so. John, do you want to address that at all?
The, I mean, it's just, you know, we start a budget process in January, beginning of January, and, you know, we work in concert with the town and we come up with what recovery issue was. It's not like, you know, there's not money that's found. Money, money doesn't get found, but the longer the time goes on, the more we know about changes, you know, within our budget. You know, and I think that, you know, working with the town and knowing what the forecast is and the deficits of the town, that as we go along and say, hey, here's what we need, here's what our budget would look like if you gave us this money, would be okay. And we're still striving to get that recovery budget and all the components of that, as opposed to, you know, taking any savings that may develop and adding those back in right now, because we believe that those items should be addressed and it would be with a larger picture or an overall strategic plan in mind. So, so, you know, and it's the years that's doing the budget process work, and we've rolled out a budget, and then as we've had changes as we proceed in time, you know, we've checked on those reductions and not continuously added items.
Michelle?
But please, I have something, just to clear up. It's not that they are taking teachers away, it's that there are retirements happening. So they are the more expensive salaried people who are retiring, and they get replaced with newer teachers. So they're less, they don't, they don't make as much. So that's what's going on in the budget. Not that any teachers are being taken away, the same number of teachers are there.
And a lot of that number is the ESSA funding as well, you know, that there's several teachers with the federal funding that's going to dissipate.
I was just going to say, I think part of the reduction that you see is the application of those funds to federal grants. So it shows a reduction, but it's actually reallocating to new, sort of, it's not coming out of town, but it's coming out of federal grants. I think that might be part of the, you know, that reduction.
Yeah. Okay, Michelle, did you have something to?
No, that's, I'm sorry. I was just going to clarify that as well, that we weren't looking to reduce the number of proposed teachers for next year, just salaries and, yeah.
And I imagine class size would be one of those things that we look at as part of the strategic plan as well going forward. Okay, I apologize for forgetting to take public comment on the budget. That is pretty important. And thank you for the questions. So, Michelle, and I'm sorry for interrupting you.
Much, much more important than what I have to say, that's for sure. I was just going to note that there, I do need to try to get a special ed subcommittee meeting on the books. So Carrie and Jen and Dr. Guinness, I'll reach out to you on that. Last Wednesday, Dr. Austin and I and Carol Perez hosted the monthly Metco Coffee with Metco families. And we had a great conversation. They are excited about the return of elementary students as well. Tomorrow, there's, or sorry, actually on Wednesday, I'm going to attend, and I think you may have saw this, there's a panel discussion. Metco is running a panel discussion on the crisis of racial segregation in suburban school districts. That is Wednesday night at 7:30. So I'm going to try to attend that. And then, as was mentioned before, Carrie and I are attending a, hosting a student forum for students at the high school to provide feedback on the reopening plans and what they would like to see school look like for the remainder of this school year. I thought it would be an idea to do that after attending the school council meetings, where we've been talking about the reopening plans and hearing directly from the students on that school council, that really gave some really interesting perspectives on what they would like to see happen in the schools over the next couple of months. And the school council obviously has been very busy taking on the role of advisory council to prepare a plan to, and a proposal to give to Dr. Austin that will be furthered onto the committee. And as well, we've also continued just meeting, doing the regular school council work of improving student safety at the high school. of improving student safety at the high school. And that's it.
Thank you. Jen?
Yes, I attended the Foster School Council meeting last Wednesday. We had a great collaborative discussion on the first draft of ideas for goals for their next school improvement plan. And additionally, Dr. Wilcox is currently working on a parent survey to help plan and address areas of school improvement, believes the plan. And the next meeting for school council will be on May fifth. And then lastly, the Foster PTO meeting was the next Thursday, March eighteenth, at seven PM, and I will be attending that. That's it.
Great, thanks, Jen. And Ness?
We had a finance subcommittee meeting on the second. Much of what John and Dr. Austin covered tonight was discussed there. And in your packets, you have the latest warrants that were signed. And that was it.
Thank you, Carlos.
Plymouth River School Council met today. Great meeting. They are excited to see the students back next Monday. The principal, Smith, and the leadership team are very grateful to the PTO for helping purchase picnic tables and also some games for the students so they can enjoy the outdoors as soon as possible. The playground will be opening soon. They, you know, she was pleased to report that many of the students are participating on the pool test, and thanks to their, you know, to the parents signing off the authorization. She recognizes that, you know, some have concern, but it is imperative that, you know, the students participate in the pool testing. And that's pretty much that. And also, John Ferris provided the Catron Facilities Subcommittee, which consists of myself, Ness, and Jen. And Habib is on board, providing an update to the master, to the school master plan. Hopefully, we'll have that master plan completed soon. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Libby?
Hi, so I attended the South School Council meeting on February twenty-fourth. And it was exciting to be planning for the return of the students, ones who fly with full time during this Monday with Carlos. And she's working out many, many logistics, with various specials and lunches and lots of other things. And she's got some really fun idea for lunch to make it cool and fun for the kids. But that's the secret for now. And she's grateful to the PTO for all the stuff to support the teachers this year. And one of the examples of what they've done recently is to have Valentine cookies or Valentine's Day, so you can decorate your own cookies. And the next meeting is going to be on March twenty-fourth. So then, for community outreach, we had these coffee with the superintendent that was on last month, and that was a very perfect session. Dr. Austin will be able to answer a lot of their questions. And we're going to do something similar through the Senior Center on April sixth. And I assume we need to plan a schedule of community outreach meeting. So Michelle and Ness will be reaching out to you guys tomorrow to get that, if Dr. Jamie wants to join them.
Thank you, Libby. Liza?
Thank you. So for the master plan, I emailed all of you tonight, today, the links. Tonight, the master plan draft is being presented to the planning board. And it is a link to the draft on the front page of the town website, and then also on the master plan committee page on the town website. And there's also a form that you can provide any comments that you want on that. There will be another public hearing meeting at a date to be determined for more comments on the master plan. I encourage any of you to take a look at that, anybody on the call. It is a lengthy document, it's ten chapters long, but it has a lot. It's great information about the current state of the town, the history, thoughts for the future, a lot of the issues that we have to face. So that is currently available now. And then for salary negotiations, tomorrow, we're meeting with the teachers on more plans for going back, reopening more of our schools. And then Thursday, we're meeting with the bus drivers for those negotiations. And Monday, March fifteenth, is a middle school school council meeting. And I have been attending the middle school advisory committee meetings for the reopening of school. We met twice in the past couple of weeks and have been doing work online as well. And then also, I just wanted to follow up on Ness on the finance committee. If possibly we could add a budget discussion to the March fifteenth meeting and also maybe look at increasing fees for this fiscal year twenty-two to help our budget. So I've heard the town is considering increasing some fees on some areas, and I think we have to do the same. It's been a while since we've increased certain fees, so I think if we could do that next week, that would, I'd appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Liza. I just, I have to reach out to Liza and Libby to schedule the next policy meeting so we can finally finish the manual I've been working on. And then I wanted to mention, we received an email from Mr. Hoy about the Hingham High School History Day. And I just wanted to congratulate and thank all of the eleventh grade history team and the students for, it sounds like it was an excellent presentation, it was their first virtual and hopefully last virtual History Day. And also thank the Hingham Historical Society for their support of that. Okay, now we have other items not reasonably known forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Does anyone have anything for that? Okay, seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Liza.
I'll second.
Thank you. Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And Imane as well.